Language is to have all this information be known before him as opposed to after the fact.
That's a question that you need directly placed on the planning board.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but that's the answer.
Okay.
Is there anyone new here this evening for the public hearing who wanted to speak before the board deliberates?
I want to speak even though I'm not new.
Do you have new information from last week?
No, but I'm a director butter. So some of this stuff was addressed directly to my property as it abuts the sign.
Okay.
So what I want to say is thank you for going out. I appreciate that. And I appreciate Paul saying he's going to work with the landscape requirements of the bylaw 3500. I was concerned about that. I don't know when the major site plan happens. Is there going to be another meeting with the butters? Is that part of the planning process or is that?
It requires mailings to all director butters.
Yes, okay. And the port party, what I missed what you said about the spring or something. I don't know. You said that there had to be something done by.
Oh, by May 15th. That's the vegetative buffer. I mean, we don't want to set them up for failure either.
Yeah, no, George, I just want to know what to expect from.
Right, yeah. So the deadlines that I've suggested, so they still have to vote, March 15th to pull the building permit for a new structure unless he's stuck in some permitting thing beyond his control. And then May 15th for the vegetative buffer. Must be in place.
Okay, and so I just want to make sure that I'm not going to be looking at port party 20 more years. That's not going to be behind whatever happens.
Well, it's temporary in nature anyway, but correct, yes.
That's what I'm saying, yes, it's temporary in nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you have a description of what you want of the line of station?
Sure, we can work on that. I think it's very descriptive in the bylaw, sorry.
It's defined in the bylaw and we would just have to see what type of vegetation fits into that criteria that we can discuss.
Does anybody, is there anybody new here tonight who wanted to speak about this permit license, excuse me? Okay, I'm going to throw it over to my colleagues, Selecting Goulart. Is there anything you wanted to add before we vote?
Before, after you and Mr. Pacheco have an opportunity to speak, I will make the motion, but I would like to speak during discussion.
Yeah, sure.
I have a question. I'm satisfied whatever thing's been said.
All right, I am entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the permit under the conditions that were outlined here tonight. And with the understanding that if any of these deadlines are not met due to the applicant's lack of ability to meet these requirements, or if there are violations of any of these requirements, that the permit will be, the town will take the permit back. It'll end. It'll be removed.
Sorry. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. When we talked about this last week, I understand completely what the residents are talking about. I can understand that. And as I said last week, if I could have one solid reason under a town bylaw or state regulation or a border health or anything, then I would not vote to approve this. However, what you've heard, what you heard last week and what you've heard tonight is what I have to vote on. And I haven't heard any reason not to vote in favor of this. But again, I'll just reiterate, if he fails to comply on any of the issues, he's looking at revocation. The town pulls the strings on this. And I will fully support any action that the town takes if in fact he does not meet the requirements or in some other way violates the conditions under which this permit is being granted tonight.
I just, I'll be brief. I had said last week that I intended to vote on this, but I did want the town administrator and the building commissioner to see if there was anything we could do to address the concerns that residents had. That is exactly what they've done. I'm glad we did not vote on this last week and just blanket approved it, no offense, Mr. Pacheco. So I'm very happy and I appreciate your work in making this a priority in that last seven days. So thank you very much.
So the hours of business is going to be nine to one, so that would be on the license?
Yes. Now, the hours, will you ever change?
You can just let us know. We're basically like your parents in this. You just got to tell us.
We have to go through the process again if he changes his hours, though.
No, that's not something that triggers.
Should it be nine to one or by appointment and have the appointments before five o'clock, six o'clock?
Well, what I was going to ask.
That way you don't come running back to.
Things quiet. Can we go with appointment open? That way there?
I think they have to be open.
My experience with this from previous municipalities is you have to have posted hours.
Yes.
So like inspectors, no offense, but Jim's got to know when you're going to be there.
So I don't, I don't think you can. That's state regulation?
I talked with the state today. They said that. It's up to the selectmen if they want. But yes, you have to have posted hours.
We would have to verify that.
Okay.
And then that's something that the board can, you know, if they approve tonight with the hours that will be given and then we find out that that's possible, I think that actually the board can make it by appointment open. We'd have to verify.
I do have a question. So is it possible that the hours of operation could be stated that appointments would be accepted between the hours of blank and blank?
I actually am more comfortable with that because now the residents have some expectation of when business will be taken care of. Right, I agree.
Well, the other thing too is if somebody shows up without an appointment, they're in effect in violation. You just can't have people driving by and say, "Did you see that, Kyle? Let's go check it out." They need an appointment to come on to the property.
Oh, no, no, not necessarily. With what he was saying last week too, that's actually my experience. I'm one of those. I don't want you to come near me. Just, I want to figure it out and then I'll tell you what I want. I know that sounds terrible, but I don't want to waste my time. This is what I want. Let's go. And I've witnessed this. So that's my concern. They have to pull on, because there's not a lot of room on the side of the road, they must be able to pull in to that facility.
But I don't have a problem with pulling off the road, but my concern is if you have to do this, let's say between the hours of nine and one, by appointment.
No, nine to one. I asked if we could do appointment only. Jim said we could do it. I'm sure you have.
Yeah, we can come back to that once we verify.
So, well, I think what's on the table right now is by appointment during blank time and blank time.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Okay, so we all agree. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And it's for six cars.
Yes, but would the hours of the appointment?
Nine and one? I mean, you threw out nine and one.
Anytime between nine and one.
Well, that was the hours that would be open, but also by appointment open.
Okay, so do you have?
Well, if you called and said I can only be there at eight thirty in the morning.
Or you can only be there at six o'clock at night after work.
Well, I thought we were needing to verify that, so I'm confused as well.
No, he can have set hours, like nine to one.
Right.
What I don't think he can have, but we'll verify, he said he spoke with the state, so we'll call, is by appointment only, only, only.
Yeah, but is that what you were seeking though? Wouldn't you seeking nine to one and be able to have appointments?
Right, and appointment open.
So I think that that would.
So you are seeking.
I know, I originally asked if we could just do it by appointment open. Now we're there. There's not somebody going in there and making traffic and making.
But we don't, we don't know if we can do that yet. So that's what we need to look into. So what are we putting on this permit?
So we're going to put nine to one and appointment open or appointment open?
And let's revisit when we have, see how it goes.
And after we verify with the state as to what you were told.
And I think we need to clarify the times of the appointment. So I don't want somebody at 10 o'clock at night. You're not going to have lights on the cars at night, so somebody can't stop by, but it's going to be reasonable during the day. Right now it'll be four o'clock.
Right.
But in the summertime, eight, nine o'clock.
I can't have control of somebody drives by and says, "I want to turn around, look at that."
Right, but there won't be lights on the car and you won't be scheduling appointments. So should we have a cutoff time for the appointments then?
Because. I, I know you want to take this to a low. There are no lights on the property right now. That means it's pitch black once the sun goes down. Before we go to the summer months where the days are much longer, we'll be back in front of the planning board for a major site plan review. So all of those items will be addressed. I'm gathering that most of the neighbors will be at those meetings. So I'm not sure, although I hear you, I'm not sure that right now it's not going to need to handle that.
Okay.
Oh, because of the MARCH date?
Right, the MARCH date, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those.
Right, what, just one thing. Paul, I thought you had eight spaces. Is that two for people coming or going?
Yes.
Okay, so there's eight spaces, six for cars.
But not eight cars.
Not, well.
Six for sale, two for customer.
Right.
Anything else?
No heavy equipment. When you build.
You're not going to have a bulldozer up there, right?
I'm ready to bring the equipment in to do.
Work, yeah, but you're not going to be parking a bulldozer two years from now.
Because we're going to limit on what I can sell on the license. I was just working.
Vehicles, right? Vehicles.
Right. And I deal with lots of people. I'll be limited to not be able to sell any equipment.
I didn't think it was for heavy equipment.
Just repair.
No.
No.
This is a class two dealership for six cars. What I would suggest is that if you start having problems, you complain to the licensing authority and it can be addressed that way.
So what does that mean though? Does that mean he can sell, he can sell heavy equipment next door?
I mean, it's allowed. It's allowed by right to do that.
So how does that margin this position down there? If you look at all the other businesses down in that area, Daphne's Hills, under the sun, well, nice and fit in the larger space. There's not a huge car dealership. It could possibly have a bulldozer. It doesn't fit.
I mean, I think this is a little bit outside the purview of this hearing. I know that sounds weird, but right now that entryway is super tight. I don't even know how you'd get one in, to be honest, right now. And that has to go through the planning board. So I would call the planning board. Just make sure that you know when that hearing date is and express your concerns. But right now we can't. He's looking for cars to, his class two.
Who's the person that oversees the license?
The selectman.
No, I mean of the sting, like is that Mastock?
RMV, the RMV.
The dealership licenses, one, two, and three?
And division of standards. Am I missing anybody? I think.
Did you answer the question?
I think I did. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just, I'm just unclear on what is happening next.
I believe he is allowed by right to sell large equipment. At this, like tomorrow, I don't know how he would fit it in.
I actually spoke to somebody in the planning board and they said no, it was cars, but I don't know.
We don't know either. They waived the site plan review, right? I mean, if that wasn't stipulated.
No, under the license I'm talking about.
What the law says motor vehicles, so is a bulldozer a motor vehicle?
I believe you're in your purview to continue on your hearing.
You had something to say.
Ma'am, just to give you an idea, class two licenses in town, this is the range. I think you're going to know most of these. Class two licenses, Mannheim, you know that one. Ed Reese, Bristol County Auto, William Rasmussen, Judith Costa, North Dyken Garage, Advanced Automotive, Thomas Spelman, heavy equipment, 508 Customs, Townline Auto. Those are all class two operations and that they run the gamut of stock. And they're all obviously under the law that regulates class two.
Anything else from the Dallas Dais? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes.
Can I get this?
Thank you. And thank you all.
That's what that is, just so you know. It'll be ended up on your license, but that way you have it.
Oh, now you want to shake my hand, Mr. Pacheco. Right? You saw it. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Mrs. LaCroy, Merry Christmas. Give Amy a hug for me. Okay. Just a moment, Kim, but we just have some people filtering out.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Okay, this is, this is good news. So I did request that the Dyken Rehoboth football team be present tonight, and I thank you all for coming. I did prepare just a brief remark, so I wouldn't forget anything. But I did ask the entire DR football team to be here this evening so that we could properly congratulate you on several things. First and foremost, congratulations on an exceptional season. You ended the season with a nine and three record, I believe, and made it to the Super Bowl after seven consecutive wins and securing the MIA, I think I said that right, division championship. The word impressive would be an understatement to describe that record. Your Super Bowl appearance was the fourth in school history, I believe. In addition, it was the first Super Bowl appearance since 1999 when I was a sophomore at DR. So I'd like to take a moment to congratulate many of the people, obviously including the players, who played a role in this exceptional football season. I would like to congratulate all the coaches, in particular head coach Dave Mora, on leading the DR Falcons and playing such a pivotal role in such a successful season. I'd also like to congratulate Coach Mora on being named the New England Patriots High School Coach of the Week last month. I'd also like to congratulate all the proud parents who have supported the team and the players not only throughout this season, but throughout the years. Your dedication has made all the difference in the world. Last, but certainly not least, I did want to congratulate the DR football team, you, the players, not just for an exceptional. Your dedication has made all the difference in the world. Um, last, but certainly not least, I did wanna congratulate the DR football team, you, the players, not just for an exceptional season, uh, but for your dedication and commitment, not only to football, but to each other. You showed up for practices, you diligently balanced, I hope, your school workload with your passion for football. Um, not only have you made your parents and your coaches proud, um, but you've made the entire town of Dayton proud. And so I just wanted to thank you all, uh, for an amazing season and a lifetime of memories. And at this time, I wanted to ask, um, if my colleagues had anything they wanted to say.
I just, uh, as a Daytonaan, I'm, I'm very proud of what you've accomplished, and you should be proud of what you've done. Thank the coaches for the great job that you've done, and you made, uh, this town proud.
And I wanna congratulate all of you too. I, I know what it, I know what it takes to win. Uh, I worked at DR for over twenty-two years, and I remember a lot of the athletic teams we had. It, it, it requires a lot of dedication to be able to show up for all those practices, to take all the heat you get when you lose, and the great feeling that you have when you win. Uh, I'm gonna ask Cable, if it's possible, could you scan the audience, and if we can get the, each of the players, uh, on camera, if you would just state your name and the grade you are in right now? So could we start over there, please?
My name is Adam Life, I'm a sophomore.
My name's Daniel Connor, I'm also a sophomore.
My name is Eric Blaisen.
I'm a junior.
My name's Harrison Craig, I'm a.
My name is Jason Kara, senior.
I'm Matt Mora, I'm a senior.
I'm Nathan Dryer, I'm a senior.
And Chase Carroll, I'm a senior.
And the coaches.
Uh, Kelly Doocy.
I'm Dave Mora.
I'm Andy Fight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything you wanted to say, Madam Administrator?
I just think it's great, especially when every team, everybody can rally around. Um, it's a great job. See you next year, right?
Go Falcons.
Go Falcons. You do not have to stay the entire meeting, I promise. We would not subject you to that. We don't want to. We don't want to, no, I'm just kidding. Okay.
So, we're Falcons too. I'm a first Falcon. Last is sixty-four.
I was not the first Falcon.
My high school actually used to play DR, we always lost.
I'm a Cardinal.
Huh? Swansea?
Oh, Lord.
I was Mr. Kara.
Don't hold that against him. Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing what you can do next year. So thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.
Have a nice Christmas.
You can download.
Merry Christmas, everybody, you're welcome. So. We just have public filtering out, just a moment. If it is okay with my colleagues, I am going to request, since we have the loan, and thank you for staying, sir. Since we have one person here for one specific agenda item, is there any way that we could move out of order?
Which, which item is it?
Auto dealer, uh, no, I'm sorry.
No.
My apologies. The liquor license renewal.
Mr. Chan, I will, we'll take, uh, agenda item sixty out of water, please.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, that motion passes, and thank you for coming back this week, Mr. Collard. Do we have an update, Madam Administrator?
Yes, we do. So we were able, naturally, the next day, we heard back from the ABCC, who told us that if the licensee goes on a payment plan with them, um, basically, they're all set and they can be renewed. So we are, go, they advised us that we can renew the license tonight and have it continued, and we're just gonna hang on to it until we hear back from the ABCC that it's okay. So, uh, our recommendation, myself and Mrs. Brady, is that you, sorry, Ms. Brady.
Are you making recommendations now, Cable?
She is, she's moving on us. Um, so she, we recommend that you vote to renew this license, um, and then that we hold it until further information from the ABCC, so we're just waiting for their guidance.
And I have no issue with that. Do, um, before I accept motions, do my colleagues have any thing they'd like to say, any issue with that? Okay, I'm entertaining motions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Was there anything you wanted to say, Mr. Collard? Alright.
Well, we can hold them on to it until our progress away, why do you have to do what he has to do, but, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and I.
You as well. Oh, you didn't even wait for the vote. Just kidding, no, just kidding.
It's okay.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for being patient while we checked that out. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Mr. Collard.
And your wife has said Merry Christmas.
And now we have no public, so, um, we are.
Cause you guys say you don't wanna be here, so why do they wanna be here?
Madam Administrator, before we move from public input, before we get to the town administrator's report, and I will yield the floor, I promise, and I will also shut up. Do we want to make an announcement regarding Old Town Hall, regarding the, do we have two elite members of the ribbon cutting committee here?
Three.
Oh, three, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner. Do we have any announcement pursuant to that beautiful building?
As far as the date?
And the time?
Uh, yes, we do.
Thank you.
Um, we, we had a, another one of our informal, informal committee meetings, and we've got all the details pretty much worked out, and we have set the date for Sunday, January twenty-seventh, from one to three P M. And if by any chance we get a snowstorm, we'll have a quick announcement, but, uh, so everyone's invited to come to what was formerly the Grange Hall, now the Old Town Hall. January twenty-seventh, a Sunday from one to three P M. Come in and see your new town facilities, uh, see what was done, um, to provide modern office space, and yet maintain the historic parts of the building that could be kept. You, you, if you're familiar with the Grange Hall, and you walk in there, it's gonna look like the Grange Hall, other than the fact that it, it is, um, it has a suspended ceiling, it has the, the proper lighting, and it has sound system. Uh, it's been brought up to code, it has handicap bathrooms, but if you don't look up and you look around at everything that's there, you're even gonna see the old benches along the wall. So I think you're gonna be very pleased with, uh, what was, um, renovated, uh, replaced, repaired, construction, constructed under the, under the directions to Agia, and members of the highway department.
So I would prob, I think we'll all say remarks there, but since you're here, um, I did want to, um, I feel like as department heads, you get a lot of complaints about stuff, so I wanted to thank you, for sticking with it, for getting it done, and for making it look as good as it does. And it really is a source of pride for the town. And I think anybody who goes to that building for either services or a meeting, anything like that, they're gonna feel the same way. So thank you for showing the town in the best light.
I appreciate that.
Well, appreciate it. And did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, no, I'll wait for that day, but I just wanted to, uh, thank Selectmen for giving you the, um, support that I needed to get, so thank you.
And thank God we have such amazing people in the highway department as well.
We did, we're a great team. Thanks.
I will, I will also echo that, that I appreciate the great work you did over there, and I know you did a lot of work, made a lot of the important decisions that made it look so well, as, looks as great as it is. We did pick January twenty-seventh because the Patriots won't be in the playoffs that weekend, because we have four, following week is the Super Bowl, and Patriots have been in the Super Bowl.
Safe, that's good, that's good.
Could it be, I think possible, so that's why we picked that weekend. So hopefully, uh, you'll take your time on that, that day, and, and come down and look at the new, uh, the new Old Town Hall. It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Karen, have anything you wanna?
She is making recommendations now.
Karen said she'd like to have office space like that.
All the floors, all those floors.
So at this time, um, as is customary, every time we have a meeting, I'm gonna yield the floor to our town administrator for the town administrator's reports. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So we have been talking about five-year plans. We've requested from our departments their ideas. What would they, you know, imagine if you're the only department and all the money's being spent on you, what would you do in the next five years? Um, so I thank everybody who submitted this and gave us feedback and ideas on what to do. Um, my favorite was actually the building commissioners, because in year five, he said, it's a catch-all for what I didn't finish yet, which is brilliant. So what I have, I've submitted all of the plans that I've received to you. There are, um, a couple more coming, um, but I gave you this spreadsheet that shows the duplicate requests, and I wanted to do this all along to show you that not only are our department heads basically on the same page, um, but this is, this is what everybody's asking for. Um, so you have that, this is just for you to take, absorb, and manifest, I guess, and then create your own. Um, our idea was that you were each gonna come back with your plans.
I sent you mine, it didn't change.
Yep, okay. Uh, that you're each gonna come back with your plans, and then we will collaborate and put one plan together.
I will say, I, even some of the, I can't remember exactly what I put on that list, but I do remember a couple things, and they're actually on here as well, so, um, that's great. So if Selectmen Gular, I know we're all busy, it's the holiday season, um, same for you, Selectmen Pacheco, when you do have time, maybe after the new year, if we could get that to the town administrator. Um, and then maybe we can, I mean, we obviously can't do everything, or maybe even a, a lot of this, um, but I think we could try to come to a consensus on, um, maybe planning, stepwise, like, we're gonna do this first, and then we can maybe do this when that's done, and then, um, so we can really start planning ahead, which I think is something that, um, everybody, um, wants to see happening, so.
And I just, the, there were a few departments, um, they really expanded their programs, um, in their five-year plans, which I wasn't expecting, and it actually was a pleasant surprise, um, just expanding their, the board of health comes to mind, the animal control officer, um, expanding their community presence in a positive way. So that's all I have to say, okay.
So we will revisit this.
Whenever.
You have their wish lists, and then, um, we will begin that discussion.
And please, there are a couple more coming, we just have to get them.
Sure.
Um, the next item is a carryover from last week, policies five oh one and five oh two, that's both related to HIPAA. Um, the feedback from that meeting was that our employees should be notified of their rights, so a quick Google search, and I found this. This document that you have here satisfies the request to inform our employees of their rights, but not making the town liable in certain ways that the current policy, in my opinion, does, makes us vulnerable for certain things. Um, also, in a more careful read and speaking with the two, there were two positions, the people that were identified with those positions actually didn't, they haven't been doing things with that. And one of the positions becomes null and void later on in the policy, so, um, that just really solidifies my recommendation that we strike those two, and in place, develop something similar to this that would say the town of Dayton on it.
So we would be doing it.
We would be providing the notice of what an employee's rights are, and how their information would be used.
And so my opinion on that, um, and we'll, we'll go around the dais, um, I'm okay with that, because it sounds like we're not just simply striking, we are going to strike and then replace. Um, I'm not going to read your mind tonight, Selectmen Pacheco, but I think I will also kind of agree with what you're, what I think you're going to say, which is, you would prefer to wait to strike it until we have that replacement.
Exactly. Yeah, that was my position the last time, so, yeah, that was my position the last time, same position. I do like this, an opportunity to look at it and had an opportunity to talk to the town administrator. I was concerned about page two, about halfway down, uh, get a list of those with whom, uh, whom we've shared information. You can ask for lists. Accounting of the times we've shared your health information for six years, I thought we're going back really pretty far, and I'm not sure we're gonna have that ability, so.
So you would, there's still, there's something you hear you on this week?
I would've wanted to, yes, yeah, but I, that would be it. I, I went through the whole thing, was a little worried, but I think it's, it accomplishes what I was seeking.
If, so, I actually, I actually agree with you a hundred percent on this. Um, me, I feel like you've converted me. Um, we already, so that policy, which is not, was not written for the town of Dayton, it is just on the books from some other town where they got it from. Um, I think that it makes a little more sense, um, if we're already not, uh, following that policy, to maybe wait a week or two, or one or two meetings, flesh this out, um, get this into a place where we all see that it fits the town of Dayton, and then we can strike that and replace it with something. And is that okay, Madam Administrator?
It is. My only comment is I am not going to put it in the format that we normally use for policies, because this is meant to be a notice for employees.
Hand it out, right? Nope, to, totally understood.
Their personal, you know, as part of their onboarding package.
Selectmen Gular.
So, did we note that in the policy, though, that they're gonna be handed, the employees will be handed this?
That's how you vote.
Did you have anything you wanted to add on this HIPAA topic?
Yeah, we're in the same group, so I would just, instead of dealing with this, just contact, uh, SMHG and say, send us the HIPAA information for our employees, and then we stamp it, town of Dayton. And that's what we work with. It, it probably is gonna be exactly like this, but since it's the insurance group that our employees are coming under, we don't have to do anything except say to them, you must provide this to us, and we will give it to our employees. Because when it actually comes to giving out health information, it is the insurance, not the town of Dayton, of course. You know, it's like.
Which is exactly why I'm most uncomfortable with the policy on the books, because it puts a lot of onus on the town of Dayton.
Like now we have a responsibility, and if we don't get this information to people, and I, I get that point of view, I understand, I, I work in the healthcare industry, um, but I'm okay with striking it and replacing it. I do, and this is why I support it, I'll be very honest. I deal on a daily basis with folks who don't understand healthcare. They don't know what their rights are. They don't know who to go to if they have a question, or they have a con, you know, a concern about, look at that, they've really revamped the technology.
We are.
Right? So they just don't know, because guess what, everybody? Healthcare is really complicated, and it, and it's meant to be that way by the industry. They want you to not understand what your rights are. So I do support this, I have no issue with the, um, what Selectmen Gular has suggested, um.
Yeah, this is dated two thousand thirteen.
Right.
So if you just contact the insurer and say, provide, please provide this to us, and we can put town a diagnosis or something off.
Sure. Sure.
And.
And it's less work now for.
Yeah, you know, the other thing too, I think is confusing about healthcare is, um, medical offices and hospitals and all that other, everyone in the field hands you one of these at least once a year. And let's face it, after you've gotten more body with these, you drop them in the bucket on the way out, because there's just, everyone is required to do that, and if you saved them all, you know? And I usually say, I have one at home, I'm all sad, because it's just, but you have to sign saying it's been, you know? But, but I think if, you know, the, one of the new day from this outfit, because that's our insurer.
This will probably also go on our bulletin board. We have that bulletin board that we use for employee labor law information, um, so I'll just.
And if somebody wants a copy, we'll have a whole copy.
Absolutely.
The university used to have, had a section on our, on our, um, pay stubs, because we had direct deposit, but there was a message place, and it would say on there, for information concerning whatever it was, contact or go to this website, or contact so-and-so, and there'd be a phone number.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, this is, I think this is just when we need an updated version, and we're just gonna do it.
It's much simpler.
What I did wanna do is thank my colleague, Selectmen Pacheco, for sticking with it, and for being willing to stand by his decision, and to convince me, and perhaps Selectmen Gular, uh, of the merits of it, so thank you, sir. Okay, old business. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Administrator, did you have anything else?
I'm all done, nope, nope, please continue.
Okay, old business, uh, the first.
That's shocking.
The first item under old business is to review and approve the job descriptions. My first question, and I did send an email to you about this, but, and you probably responded, but Lord knows it's been buried. Is there an issue with why the animal control officer description is not on here?
Yes. And I can answer that, because I mentioned it to the town administrator. Um, they combined the animal control officer with the animal inspector. And, um. And I was talking to the chairman of the board of health and said to him, "You can't combine these two because one is a town appointment and one is a state appointment." And although the duties of the ACO crossover at times with that of the animal inspector, there are specific duties of the animal inspector that are written right into the state description. So what I did for, and he said, "Okay, I understand what you're saying." Because he and I were both chairman of the board of health at one time. And so what I did for him was take the two positions on one sheet and separate them so that the ACO, animal control officer closely follows what they had. But the animal inspector cites the nominating authority, the appointing authority, the, who that person answers to, and duties that are specific, very specific, to animal control. And the emphasis that the state has placed on rabies control. So I got the, I actually got the description off of the website and I did cite the sections of the law and also that job description for the inspector. Also mentions the frequency of reports, the types of forms that must be used that are provided by the state. And it's the Department of Agricultural Resources that does this, not the, not the Department of Public Health. And what else? Phone numbers and addresses that were all listed there. And this was the most up-to-date stuff I could find. So I emailed that to Mr. Pires and to Mrs. Grassi. And so they would have it because they're meeting tomorrow night, so.
So we're not voting on this tonight?
They're going to get it back.
So we can discuss it when we have it. Okay, so we have the town accountant, the police chief, the council on aging director, and the veterans agent. So before we, what are we voting, I'm sorry, Madam Administrator?
I'm sorry, so of course.
Like, are we voting on this edited one or what's going on here?
So let me, I'll just go one by one. The town accountant's on here again because you had just gotten it the day of.
Correct, I had no issue with.
We wrote this together, yes. And we wrote this together, so she's on board. I'm going to skip the police chief for a second. The veterans agent, Selectman Goulart did, as she mentioned last week, had changes. And Dawn had agreed with those changes, so that updated one is there before you tonight. The council on aging director, that description you have, she's the only one that we have not edited to form, this new kind of form that we've adopted. And to be honest, I, it was me. I didn't have time to sit down and go back and forth with her, so that is something. But this is reflective of what she's doing. I mean, I don't feel that the form of it should hold things up. And I've done her evaluation and she's done hers, so.
I feel like you're saying form, what you really mean is the format.
Format, I'm sorry.
That's, that's like, that doesn't even matter.
And regarding the police chief, so again, Selectman Goulart did have some changes for this and his thought, and I tend to agree, is that some of his job duties and his job description were merged together into this updated format. And because it was contractual, he wanted the rest of the board to weigh in and go from there. So I don't feel that this will tie up an evaluation process if you want to hold on to these descriptions and we can vote on something in the new year.
Well, it sounds, well, let's not start with a concession. It sounds like the town accountant and the veterans agent are ready to go.
No, not the veterans agent. I spoke to him yesterday, but neither one of us had the time to go through the thing. What I said to him was, "Dawn, I need to meet you, meet with you to just go over some, the minor changes, okay?" And I said, "I don't want to just say everything's all right." So no, he and I, and when you and I talked, it was going to be the veterans agent and the police chief that I just showed the mocked-up things and I haven't met with either one of them.
So I sent him a track changes copy, this is the veterans agent, to show exactly what your points were.
Oh, was it before yesterday?
And he said it was okay.
Oh, okay, because when I said.
It was before yesterday.
I'm sorry, I knew that, I'm sorry.
It was before yesterday.
Oh, then, then when I was speaking to him, he must have thought I had other changes because he, I said, "We'll have to get together." So as long as, oh, then I don't have a problem with the veterans agent.
It was just, we all didn't know what each other knew. Okay, so let me rephrase that. It sounds.
Touche.
It sounds.
For child security.
So we, it sounds like we can possibly make a vote on the veterans agent, town accountant, and the executive director of the council on aging.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I shall move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it and that motion passes. I do just ask, why are you looking? I'm sorry, I thought I did, do I have something on my face? Okay. We will get the police chief job description fleshed out by our meeting in January?
Yep.
Okay, because there's a couple, I know we have a holiday, but there's a couple of weeks in between that? Okay, all right.
But I did talk to him and I said, "I'm not going to slow down on the evaluation process" and he was okay.
No, none of the things in here would affect that.
So these notes and changes, they're yours, they're Mrs. Goulart's?
So I worked with the police chief and put stuff together and presented it to you. Selectman Goulart had changes and we were both a little uncomfortable without hearing what you said due to some of his duties being listed in his contract.
So I, here's how I feel. I do see the changes, I have looked at the changes. I want to wait to hear back from the police chief before I say whether I agree with the edits. That's my position. And it's just, I just want, it's his job description, just like if I went and tried to edit the building commissioners after he had worked on it with the town administrator, I would want, you know, to know what they thought.
The person has to be involved.
Yeah, exactly.
You just got to keep in mind that, that person holds that position now, but we're defining what that job is for future employees also.
It's kind of generic, it's kind of generic, yeah. Because the contract is specific. Just while we're talking about our next meeting, it's the ninth and the 23rd of January, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. So that, just so the public is aware, the two sort of outstanding ones that we are finalizing are the police chief's job description and the animal control officer slash animal inspector. So we will get that fleshed out.
Just as a follow-up to Selectman Pacheco's comment. I fully intend that before we ever hire somebody new to review the job description every single time.
Oh, absolutely. No, totally, totally. And as the personnel manager, I would give you the leeway to do such a thing. Okay, so again, public, we will hold on the police chief and the animal control officer slash state inspector and we do expect to have an update for you at some point next meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Great work and thank you to all the department heads, you included, for helping us in this exercise.
Super demanding this month, so that's true. Between the five-year plans and job descriptions, evaluations, and everything else, so thank you, everybody.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Ordering you to go to a license place.
It was my pleasure.
I am, and I hope you have a nice dinner. I hope you have a Merry Christmas and I hope that you will give Cheryl a hug for me.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
See you, Jim.
The next item on the agenda was something we had sort of surface discussed. We kind of, it was 11, we had to leave last week. But I figured, let's continue the discussion. I don't expect that it'll be, take us too long, so I will grant us 10 minutes. I don't think it'll even take 10 minutes, to discuss the iPads and electronic packets. And just so the public is aware, I did make a proposal, really for myself last week, that I was okay with using an iPad and having our fantastic administrative assistant, instead of printing me out all the material, I was okay with having it emailed and I would access the document on the iPad and that is what I would use. I think it's, and you had suggested at that meeting that everybody has their own preference, so if someone doesn't want to do that, I'm okay with them. I, I like paper too, but, I really do, I really mean that. I love books, I love paper. But I do want to try to at least be conscientious and I want to put my, I want to bring myself out of my own comfort zone on this and see if I can be a millennial. So I, I want to see if we can save some money on the printing of this paper and the ordering of the paper, even though we have sarsage, right? So I, what do my colleagues think? Oh, before that, did you do any research? So I had given you some figures.
Yes.
On pricing and all that.
Cheaper ones.
We like that.
So we, I put this in, understanding Selectman Goulart's preference for paper and that's fine. I, I put in the figures for two iPads, two Apple pencils in case you wanted to write notes.
What's an Apple pencil?
It's like a stylus.
Like, if you were going to write. You would just use that like you were writing on paper.
They have Apple crayons too, but I thought the pencil would be better. And I also thought that we would win Selectman Goulart over because she uses a pencil quite a bit as well. So that was a little throwback to you, Selectman Goulart. The chairman had requested a keyboard. However, Mrs. Brady, who's brilliant, said that she found one cheaper for her use, so we would probably take this off, but it's $90 through Apple. Apple has a government thing, a government pricing thing, just so everyone's aware. So that's what I was on.
So the government pricing is different than what a consumer would pay?
Right, and so anyway, the two iPads, the one case with a keyboard and the two pencils come to $1,109.25, free shipping. That also comes with the Apple Care for two of them. It's that warranty thing, so that's $62 if you wanted to remove that. We can find cases that are cheaper on Amazon or really Walmart anywhere, so I did not.
Amazon's totally okay. The cases they put, I am an Apple owner and I have had an iPad. The cases they put on there are more expensive, probably by 50% than what you would find on an Amazon. So I'm okay with having not an Apple case, I don't care about that. I do want a case and the reason is because I've seen what happens when you don't have a case and they shatter. And we certainly, if we were to invest in this, and again, these would be used by a future board if we're no longer here, if they wanted to.
I'm glad that you said that because there's free engraving allowed if you order through Apple and I put Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen, so you have a.
And it should be, it's property of the Town of Dayton.
It's like a built-in asset tag. They would be locked with us here in the Selectmen's office. And then, did I say the folio case? That's included in the total. That's a case, it's the case and the Bluetooth keyboard together.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So that's, that's included in that total. We can find one for cheaper, but anyway, this is, that's kind of the figure, that's the figure that you're looking at for two iPads and two pencils and a case.
Cool.
The other thing that I would insist if we were to go through with this, just because I know the nature of things and we need this anyway, so it's not because of this, but I really would like Karen and myself to have the Adobe Pro software on our computers. It's about $200 a license. I know that other boards are looking for that as well, so we might be able to get a bulk discount, but it would be very necessary if we were to go to an electronic packet because there are times where I might need to update something or we need to add something to the packet.
I will.
And Adobe can let us do that.
No, I totally agree that Adobe Pro is necessary. Where I disagree with you is that you need it for this. This would be needed for any PDF that we may need to edit.
It's for the electronic permitting I want to eventually, applications that I want to eventually do, but we could use it for this as well.
Like, I'm surprised we don't have this. Like, I'm wondering, now what I'm thinking is every time we get sent a PDF that we need to edit or sign or put a date in, what I'm thinking is Mrs. Brady then has to go to the copier, scan it as a Word document. It's, that's insane to me. That's more work than would be necessary.
I'm requesting it in the budget, so.
I just contacted the person that sent it to me and said, "Now send it to me in Word." Because I can't do anything with this.
I actually retyped a union contract because it was too much.
Well, some people like aren't good with computers and so if they only have it as a PDF, then they don't know, like they, if they don't have Adobe Pro, then they can't then go back in and change it, so.
So that's coming.
Why would you put it on each computer instead of just get a site license?
What do you mean a site license? Go through the online portal?
Like the university.
Yeah.
They don't pay per computer, they get a site license.
I'm just partial to having the license. I'm partial that way through our whole system.
Well, what I'm saying is if we got the site license, it would cover X. And if you don't use all, all of the.
Features.
Allowed, all of the downloads, I'll call them. If your site license gives you 100 computers and you don't use them all, as you add computers, you can add them into it. You don't have to keep paying $200 a pop for software. The, I know they do that with antiviral software too. They buy a license and they can put them everywhere, you know?
There's a, like, so, right, I think it's 10. I think Adobe does groups of 10. So you buy it and it's for 10 users.
But what we're discussing tonight is not Adobe Pro, so I want to get us back to discussing. No, 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 it's okay, you were responding, I get it. I, I know. So I would like to use an iPad. I would like this to be something the, a future board could use and maybe not be beholden so much to paper. So I support it and I'll entertain motion.
Did we get prices on anything but iPads? Because you can buy the same units made by other companies that are on Apple and they're less expensive. That's the, that was the comment somebody made to me. Why does it have to be iPads? I says, "I don't use an iPad." And I says, "I'm not intending to get one for this purpose," but they said, "You can get a," and I forgot what they said. You can get.
You could get a Surface.
You can get, I've got, I have a Surface myself.
Oh, they have like generic ones, do I know what you're talking about?
They have, there are other companies that make these besides the iPad and they're less expensive.
I only, I, I'll answer for just myself and you can answer for yourself. I only use Apple products. I only have a MacBook, I only have an iPhone, so that's what I know how to use. So that's why I asked for an iPad.
I knew they had government pricing. I mean, I didn't, honestly, I didn't search, but I can. I searched on the state contract too.
Okay, I'm just expressing something that somebody out there heard us talking about and I said, "Well, I'm not going to get one anyhow, but I'll ask the question."
I searched on the state bid list thinking something would be like that. Then we asked the schools and their pricing was actually a little bit higher than this. So this was the best, but I did not specifically say Surface Pro, Chromebook or whatever. I searched iPad, government pricing.
I agree with Mrs. Goulart, that's a possibility. We could check out the other cheaper computers, that'd be great. I'm a little concerned about the price, to be quite honest. And I said, I think, I believe I said at the last meeting that I'd be interested in experimenting with this. The problem is if I don't like it, we've now purchased an iPad or whatever for this position, so I'm in a little trouble by that. I get the millennial part of it, but the baby boomers look at this a little differently.
Well, I wouldn't use anything that wasn't an Apple. So if that was where this board was going, you can just, we'll keep printing paper after paper after paper.
You can get your own. You can acquire your own.
So now I'm confused, are we, okay.
I don't know, they haven't, they haven't voted.
Well, it's not a motion before.
What I found, the biggest conglomeration and the biggest to-do that I ran into with computers was when I went to the university. And we had, actually had a president come in and say, "Going forward, everybody's going to have an Apple. All these other PCs are going." I was one of the first people to say, "I have no compatibility if I, if you take this equipment from me because nobody out there in those centers has Apple products." The entire legal department went up in the wall because the attorney said, "No, we've got to stay with PCs. We're not starting over again." And what they did was they ended up with a dual program and that's why their OIT, Office of Information Technology, the support for that out in Amerist, does both because they found out there was not complete compatibility depending on various departments and software, but also users' preference. So as, again, I was only repeating something somebody else said, but when I look at prices, if I said I wanted to do this, we would be looking at another $550. That's like $1,500 and something worth of paper that we're not going to, we don't spend that kind of money on the three of us. But I don't object if, if my colleagues want to get these.
If you are thinking 26 meetings a week for years.
Remember, what you're, what you're thinking about passing on to future boards, I'm telling you, don't do that simply because, look at computers, okay? Even laptops, in, in a period of time, I don't know how many times we've bought computers since I've come on the board, only because you have to keep up with the latest, you know, storage capacity and, and, you know, terabytes was not a word way back, it was megabytes and all this stuff. But you have to stay current with the hardware and the. It was megabytes and all this stuff, but you have to stay current with the hardware and the software. So I really think that if the board does this, it's for the use of this board, and if the next board members say, okay, I can use that, but I don't think it's a long, long-term solution. And, and like, I don't object to you using them. All I'm saying is, that somebody said to me, is, is that the only option? And I said, I don't know, I'll ask the question. I'm also, I don't object to you getting one, I don't object to Mr. Pacheco getting one, or, or the software that has been talked about. Not at all. I'm just looking at costs, and I'm, I'm saying, if the board decides to get these, I would support you guys getting them. I personally don't want it. I, I don't need one for myself, I'll put it that way. Because I use my laptop at home, I use my, I use the office one here. But I don't think that we should give anyone the impression it's a long-term solution for future boards of Selectmen, because technology changes just so quickly.
We would reinvest in it.
You know, so.
Um, how much is it for one? So it sounds like they're supportive of, of me having one.
If you got, so it's three twenty-two plus sixty-two if you wanna get the Apple Care, so that just makes sure that you're protecting your investment. Do you want a pencil? Apple pencil?
Oh, I thought you were like, offering, I'm sorry.
An Apple pencil?
It's, it's not, it's not necessary, because I'm gonna type, that's why I wanted the keyboard.
Three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I think the town can afford that.
What about the software?
Oh, that doesn't include, but we'll get a computer.
But what about the software we're talking about? Is that gonna be loaded on computers? I mean, at least Karen's and whatever, or the one that. Because the one I use in there doesn't have it.
So the software I mentioned, so maybe that was a mistake. I just, I know that Ken is very aware of what hidden costs and things, so I just wanted him to know.
Oh, okay.
But that, nothing, that's the beauty of a Mac, like, that's why people like Mac. It doesn't come down with all of the stuff that you don't actually use.
You add what you want.
You add what you want and you customize it. So it wouldn't come down with anything except your regular apps. Pages being one of them. Pages is the app that you use to read books. What I like about that is scanning machines are not always perfect, so when you scan it, your PC might show it and it'll be all tilted, because the scanner didn't grab it correctly, but Pages automatically straightens that out for you and gives you page numbers. So there's, there's that functionality there.
Well, and I would type in there.
But if you do one, I think it's perfectly acceptable. So three hundred and eighty-four dollars for one, and that's without the pencil. We'd get the case cheaper.
I just had a thought, too. I gave my mother an iPad.
You're not gonna take it away from her, are you?
I think I gave it to her eight years ago. That's almost three boards of Selectmen that would have had that, so, they do last.
But they change. Does she have a, is it a touchscreen screen on here around?
It's an iPad. It's, by definition, it's touchscreen.
The computer I just replaced was over eight years old, and the reason I replaced it was, I had added the maximum storage capacity, and I did everything possible I could in increments, because it, in other words, instead of buying another laptop, I kept adding bits and pieces. But the last time I added memory to it, they said, this is the end. Okay, and I said, okay. And, and not only that, the, the price of a laptop is, you know, the one I bought is, didn't cost me an arm and a leg.
So three eighty, if, if Selectman Pacheco, I'm, I'm not speaking for you, I know you don't, you're, you're sort of expressing you don't want one, but what, so three eighty times two is seven something. That's almost five hundred, yeah, that's almost five hundred, four hundred dollars cheaper than what, so if we don't get the other extras.
It's the Apple pencil, so the Apple pencil's ninety-three dollars.
Oh, Lord, yeah, we don't need that. We have real pencils.
Can you use a real, a regular stylus?
I don't even need them.
That Sersage pen I have has a stylus on it. And a lot of pens, like your normal pens, especially the ones that you get at MMA, will have the stylus too. And then the slim folio case was ninety dollars. That's why I say we can get something cheaper somewhere else.
Yeah, you don't need that. Yeah, we'll find something.
I bought my case at Walmart. I walked in there, one did, boom.
And it's better.
Twenty dollars.
And it's better. It's going to protect your iPad better than anything else.
No, they want your iPad. Apple wants your iPad debris. I'm not making this up. They do, so you have to buy another one. Okay, so what was that pricing, three hundred?
Three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Eighty-four, even? Okay. All right, I.
I mean, that was just looking at tax, but we would have, we don't pay tax, so we would put in our.
Oh, yeah, the tax exempt, yeah.
You know, if you get one, and if Mr. Pacheco says, let me see that, he might be able to try it and say whether, no, no, not give it to you, but if he could see usefulness, then he might say down the road, you know what, I think I wanna get one of those. But like you said, if he gets one and then doesn't use it, he's gonna feel like, mm.
Of course, obligated. We wouldn't want that, obviously. I get that.
And the engraving is free, just so everyone knows that, we're not springing for engraving.
And Mrs. Goulart may change her position too, after watching you.
I'll try, yeah.
I've got a Surface. I've got the Surface, so it, it could, you know, if I decided not to use my laptop, I mean, I could do all this on my laptop, but then I'm gonna, I'm still gonna have to print all this stuff. Now, the laptop I've got, I can write on, and it's got, you know, the, the touch thing, I don't have to use the mouse and all that, but.
I don't wanna seem not empathetic, like, I take the notes, everyone knows this, like, I am a paper person, I get it.
Yep, I'm sitting here scribbling too.
I get it.
And the other thing too is, what, what I have at home, even with the new one, is still, when I come in to use this one, and this is an older unit, because this, this is older than the ones that were purchased when Mr. Cronin was here. Remember, we get those?
I do.
This is the oldest unit, but I still have good compatibility, so, you know, I'm not running into problems. As a matter of fact, every now and Karen has to use it.
So I am, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion then, that we purchase one iPad, and what was the second part? What's the sixty-two dollars for?
It's Apple Care. It's like a warranty, make sure.
With Apple Care.
Are you saying I'm a destruct, force of nature that's gonna destroy it? I would never.
Happen.
For a total cost of?
Three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Where is the money coming from?
Office supplies.
That's already been funded?
Oh, yeah, as part of your budget, you have office supplies. That's what this would be.
We don't use it that much.
We buy paper with it, though, right?
I think that's it. It's different, isn't it?
There's a line for townwide paper.
Yeah, sorry. All right, any further discussion on this? Before we vote, I'm thinking it might pass. So I do just want to thank my colleagues for affording me the ability to transition to electronic communication. And in turn, I respect your decision and totally understand the love of paper. I get it. All right, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. I do, this is totally not on the agenda, so I don't wanna discuss it tonight, but the engraving thing, because I've talked to our town accountant Jen Louise about this many times, we should think about having an assets inventory system somewhere. Where, okay, so, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not, it's not in your goals or anything, it's just.
She actually amended.
Like, do you understand what I'm saying, Selectman Pacheco? I just think it's, you know, like, you have a laptop, like, that should have, and I know it never leaves this office, I understand, but it should have some, like, a Town of Dayton thing.
We have, we have the asset inventory. What we don't have is the, the tagging ID system. And, as I said, where I worked before, oh, yeah, we had a system. Not everything gets tagged. You, you start out with a minimum dollar value.
Yes, yeah. But she's been very insistent about it, and she's right.
But where she's got the list, it would just be assigning tag numbers to the list.
And every year, for the state anyway, we had to go through our inventory.
Yes.
And check to see if we still have this equipment. Nobody was taking it home or whatever, so that's important.
And if you got rid of something, this one comes off and the new one comes on, yep.
Did we vote?
Yes, we voted.
We did, okay.
Say that, we could've got right by it.
You bamboozled me. All right, thank you, colleagues. We are moving on now to the Town Council Rules and Regulations. Madam Administrator, you always read these. Is it okay if I give it a sure? Okay, testing my reading, reading ability. Okay, this policy is the use of Town Council, and this is the first reading. We will do two more readings. We will not actually read it. We will post it online, we will solicit your feedback, and then we will vote on it at the second January meeting towards the end of the month. Background. Authorized by Article III Legal Affairs of the Town's Bylaws, the Board of Selectmen have the express authority to appoint a Town Council to prosecute, defend, and compromise all litigation to which the town is a party. Town Council shall be employed to assist in any and all legal matters that come before the town. Purpose and applicability. In an effort to control costs, ensure effective utilization, and to be kept apprised of legal matters coming before the town in all aspects of the organization, the Board of Selectmen established the following policy to govern the use of Town Council. This policy shall apply to all boards, committees, and departments seeking legal opinions and use of Town Council as they carry out town business. And public, before I continue, please remember, this is sort of a policy that was crafted based on a directive that we voted on several meetings back, that said the same thing. Policy. One, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Town Council for a period of three years. Two, requests to use legal services outside of the duly appointed Town Council, such as a firm specializing in a particular area, must be approved by Town Council prior to any board, committee, or department enlisting the services of said outside services. Outside Council shall be paid for by the respective department, board, or committee requesting such services. Three, requests by boards, committees, and departments to use Town Council shall be presented to the Town Administrator for approval. Prior approval must be received in order for payment to be provided through Budget 151 Town Council. Four, unless prior approval is granted, only the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen or the Town of, Town Administrator are authorized to contact Town Council. Five, in the rare instance of an emergency where an immediate response is required in order to avoid a result detrimental to the best interests of the town, prior approval is waived. As soon as possible, the Town Administrator and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen are to be notified of the use of Town Council. A request of this nature should be avoided to the greatest extent possible. Signatures. So that is the first reading. We will have two more opportunities to give our feedback. If we have any suggestions, comments, edits, that we may want to make to this document before it is approved, and then we will vote on this at the January twenty?
Third.
Third meeting. Before we move on, colleagues, just off the top of your heads, do you have any edits for this right now?
Yes, there are terms in here that already violates the opinion of Town Council about who can contact him. And I mentioned that when we discussed this before. A three-year term of appointment, I really think the board needs to talk about this. And probably, we need to meet with Town Council because of the nature of the things that we wanted to talk about. And I'm not gonna go into that here, but there has been discussion. We need to clarify, outside Council shall be paid for by respective department, board, or whatever. If they have a budget and they're an elected official, you cannot tell them they cannot contact Town Council. As a courtesy, they can tell you, but they don't have to, and if they're gonna use their own money to pay for this, that's part of the opinion that David rendered that violates part of this.
Well, and I, what I will say about that, and Madam Administrator, you can respond, but before you do, I did just wanna say, it seems like that policy number three is slightly different than the language that we inserted into that directive, which was something, something to the effect of, if you want to use the Board of Selectmen's Town Council budget line, then you need to seek Board of Selectmen approval, which frees us, frees us of the, you know, the town clerk just picking up the phone. She has her own Town Council.
Right. I know what we said. If you don't have a budget, if you don't have budgeted funds for legal opinions, or whatever, and you're expecting the Town Council to represent you in, you know, litigation and all this other stuff, first of all, the board has to be involved, and, because you're asking to use, if you will, the general Town Council thing. That's what we talked about.
So what I, so to flesh this out, what I think, under purpose and applicability, that second sentence, this policy shall apply to all boards, committees, and departments seeking legal opinions, and the use of the, and I'm not, of the Board of Selectmen's Town Council budget line.
So that's Budget 151. So the use of, so insert Budget 151 Town Council as they carry on.
So we want that to be consistent with our directive. I did not know, and I apologize, Madam Administrator, because it didn't say, and I, again, I, it's late. I, it didn't say Board of Selectmen Budget 151 Town Council. I also was a little confused about Policy Three, which is why I misspoke when I said what I said before that, so I do apologize.
Add Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, just so it's clear, that our town clerk can pick up the phone if she needs to and call Town Council, because she has her own, I'm using that department as an example, has her own Town Council budget line. So I think, once those, once we insert.
She does. Zoning has one, planning has one. Those are the ones I can think of that already have council.
It needs to be stated, and I know these boards know that, but if the town as a whole utilizes outside council, he needs to sign off, I know you know that.
Well, he already has. I believe he will. He's done that.
But I just, I mean, I wanna make sure that's clear, like, twenty years from now, I wanna make sure that's clear.
What is the logic of that, though? Why?
Why? Because you, you, the Selectmen have appointed a Town Council. That's the guy. That's the firm we have chosen. And only in certain cases can you select other Town Council. And the reasoning might be they're a specialist, like the cable license agreement, or zoning, I know there's lots of stuff going on there. So he can say, yeah, that's fine. He also, in the legal world, might know something about that lawyer that you don't. I don't know, I'm making that up. That hasn't happened. I'm making that up.
But the other thing too is, if you bring in outside council, they keep him in the loop.
Right. And he, if he knows it, and the opposing attorney tries to loop him in, he's not sucked into that. He knows, no, this lawyer's handling that. That's the other, because that's actually happened.
And if it ends up with, I'll call it major litigation, he's gotta be involved.
So it sounds like we just needed a little clarification on that second sentence in purpose and applicability, and then just that little addition into Policy Number Three. Does anybody else have any other suggestions?
I'm opposed to the three-year appointment for discussions we've had in the past. And I think we need to meet with Town Council and make them aware of those discussions.
Well, currently, we're doing it every year.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
I don't know what you mean by that. I'm not opposed to a one-year. I.
When I have a chance to remind you of what you said when you first came and we raised an issue, it'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Again, I'm not opposed to this being one year, if that's a sticking.
I think we should, I, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'm gonna be so bold as to suggest we change it to one year. I'm not saying that we can't have a discussion about changing it, but that's what it currently is right now. And so, we should have that comport with what we have on the books right now.
Well, we did appoint him for a one-year term back in June, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We change it from three to one, because that's what we're doing. We do it for one year.
Right.
Selectman Pacheco, did you have anything?
No, that's, I'm in agreement with the one year also.
And again, I'm not, and I know you're not advocating really either side, but I'm not opposed to having that discussion with Town Council as to whether they're okay, or they want, or they don't want to have a multi-year appointment. But just for the sake of what we have right now, and getting the policy on the book, so to speak, is one year okay? Because that's what we are doing right now. Okay, perfect. Okay, so public, again, we will have two more readings, and then we will vote. So give us your suggestions if you feel strongly. I don't know why they would, but we're happy to hear your suggestions and incorporate them into a final document. Moving right along to new business auto dealer license renewals. So it looks like what, and we're doing Class One, Two, and Three, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if we wanna have a discussion. We sort of touched upon this earlier during the public hearing. I have no issue with the recommendation on the list. I guess someone is not renewing, that's fine. But I'm okay with taking the suggestions as they appear this evening for license renewals.
Well, our Class Twos, we have ten, because three were revoked, so we got a list there, but there's only ten when you remove the ones that were revoked.
So the removals are the first one under Class Two.
Yep.
Under Mannheim, correct?
Okay, the first one, the third one, and the second one from the bottom, down here.
Thank you.
Those are out.
Thank you.
The other ones are active.
Okay.
Are, they're up for renewal.
All right. I'm accepting motions, and then I guess we can, if we need to have discussion, we'll have that during the discussion portion.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Class One, if that's okay? Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry, Mr. McKeon.
I am not, I am not dealing with thunder, Mr. McKeon.
I called him Mr. Chairman one night, and he looked at me like, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move that. Mr. Chairman, I move that we renew the class-one dealers' licenses for Lynn's Propane Trucks Corporation, 2281 Cedar Street, and Truck and Iron Traders LLC, 1892 County Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the following class-two licenses be renewed. Mannheim Remarketing Incorporated, doing business as Mannheim New England, 123 Williams Street. Edward D. Reese Senior, Reese's Auto Sales, 556 Somerset Avenue. Bristol County Auto Sales Incorporated, 2387 Winthrop Street. William Rasmussen, Kimball Enterprises, 2200 Lewis Street. Judith A. Costa, Costa's Truck and Auto, I think that's sales, 665 Middle Street. North Dyson Garage Incorporated, 200 Williams Street, P.O. Box 66.
Should we do that as seven-five-seven?
That's the one that's going to move.
You just, you just did that.
So we should do this as, okay, we don't need to do it. That's what I'm saying. Okay.
Okay, so, so that's, that's not the correct address.
Actually, tell me, you, so you voted at the public hearing to allow him to move, but you do need to vote to renew him because otherwise...
Okay, thank you. That makes sense.
Oh, and what's the correct street address?
Seven fifty-seven Williams Street.
All right, so let me go back. Seven, all right, so after I said Judith Costa, Costa's Truck and Auto Sales, 665 Middle Street, the next one is North Dyson Garage Incorporated, 757 Williams Street, P.O. Box 66. Thomas Spelman, Medway Motor Sales, 2035 Winthrop Street. 508 Customs, 1940 County Street. Townline Auto and Storage, 100 Williams Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would, oh, I'm sorry.
No, Madam, Selectmen Pacheco.
Yeah, Mr. Pacheco, the case that we heard earlier had questioned whether we're going to treat all of the class-two licenses the same, so we checking into...
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Checking into what they're using to repair their automobiles?
All of them, all of them will be reached out to. We will get the proper identification of their licensed garage repair facilities and move forward with that.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Yes, they will. And we were going to say the same thing.
It's not easy, but we appreciate it.
Is there time to do the inspection of the records?
No. Well, I mean, are you going to have a special meeting?
No, no, we don't do it. Somebody goes out and looks at the books, the paperwork.
So that needs to be a police officer or a state policeman. It cannot be a member of this board.
Okay, so after some time, so I believe it's got to be done before we issue the licenses.
It's supposed to be, but they're all also supposed to have garage repair facilities listed, and we're supposed to be licensing garage repair. So we're a little bit in limbo. I'm aware of them.
Okay.
We're aware of them. We're going to take steps to fix it. But I see what you're saying.
So next year.
It's also difficult because the law specifies a mayor police board.
What is a police board?
That's why the Board of Selectmen did it in the past, because they oversee the police department.
Or the state, and then it goes into the state police and the state officials. So we'll just reach out to the state police.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following class-three licenses be renewed. Stephen Lewis, L&amp;L Used Car Pots, 2091 Cedar Street. Borges Foreign Auto Pots Incorporated, 2200 Lewis Street. Those two have been renewed for years and years. The third one on the list, my understanding was that there was a rule or a bylaw or something in this town that can be no more than two class threes, and when those go out of business, there will be none. So I'm wondering why number three is on there.
I believe one was Grand South. It's been there since I've been.
It has been? Number three has?
Yep.
I remember the last couple of years, too.
Okay. And the third one is Bristol County Audi Auto Incorporated, 2387 Winthrop Street.
I'll second that motion.
I thought you were saying Audi. I'm like, what? We have an Audi indictment.
Only can.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it. This motion passes. Next on the agenda under new business this evening is a review of license fees. I'm not entirely sure.
I can take this one.
Yeah, sure, Madam Administrator.
A few meetings ago, there was a question on a certain fee for a certain license and a question about whether or not we had to schedule fees. Turns out we do. In reviewing this, however, I think, well, I have some recommendations, but I'm not looking for a vote tonight. But there are some items, this says still Board of Selectmen/Health, and there are items that would just be the Health Department, the Board of Health. So we do need to go through this and remove things. There is an error on one of them, but it doesn't matter because we don't have amusement devices anyway.
May I make a suggestion? Instead of us literally going through this list tonight and picking out things, I'm okay with you and one Selectmen, or you, you, one Selectmen and one Board of Health member getting together and fleshing this out and then bringing it back to the board.
I don't think you need a Selectmen. I think if the town administrator talks to Board of Health, they'll come up with, here's your list and here's the Selectmen's list.
And then we can go back over, like, is this fee from 2003? By the way, public, this sheet looks like it's from November 2nd, 2003. So it has been...
It's been updated.
I'm sorry.
It's been updated.
I misspoke. January 1st, 2013. But still, that's five, almost six years. So I think this is something that we should do. If it's okay with you, Madam Administrator, I'm okay with you speaking to Ross or Chairman Pires, whoever from the Health Department, Mr. Pilling, going through the list.
Some of these have gone up. Isn't the landfill sticker fifteen dollars now at the landfill? This says ten for a resident. Ten dollars a year.
She thought it was twenty, I thought.
It's gone up. I know it's gone up.
In any case, it does need to be updated.
Yeah, so that's why we need to do the update.
I am going to recommend increases, just so everyone's...
Okay, well, and what I'm going to say is I'm not promising if I'm going to agree with them, but I...
No, exactly.
I do, we do at least need to go through the list.
They need to be reviewed.
Totally. Yes, they need to be reviewed. Colleagues.
I do have a question. What is the Lord's Day sales?
That relates to the blue laws.
I have a question on that, too.
What is it, please?
That relates to the blue laws. That's Sunday sales. The Lord's Day is Sunday. And back when Massachusetts had the, you know, the blue laws, you couldn't do certain things and you couldn't sell certain things. But there is a method of licensing of the sale of certain things. Of course, we have a fee to go with it. But that's what it is. That goes back to the old blue laws. You know, I'm wondering how many of those have already been repealed? Because they talked about that also.
Oddly enough, in 2003, in this eleven-two, so Election Day was right around the corner, in 2003, that was Massachusetts' question on whether or not to allow liquor licensing on Sundays from 12:00 to 6:00. And it passed. So I don't, I'm wondering if this was just right before that passed. I don't know why it would be that way.
But we'll have to go through the list.
But that, I think, would be eliminated. But this is just to let you know that we do have fees.
Okay. So what I will say is, interesting aside, they don't, so when I lived in France, I know everyone is like, please don't tell us this story about this. They actually, no, you'd be surprised, there was nothing open on Sunday. And I asked somebody about it, and I said, why is nothing open on Sunday? I asked because, turns out, I had to wait till Monday to eat. So they told me that the French government wants things closed on Sunday, and they make it so expensive through fees, like permit fees, to be open on a Sunday, and that's why everything's closed, because nobody wants to pay that. So interesting aside, I do thank you for being willing to go and do this. I know it's not fun. It clearly needs to be done. And what I will also request is that once we have it fleshed out, the Board of Health will post their fee list on their website. The Board of Selectmen will post ours on ours. That didn't sound right. We will post it on our website as well.
You actually will have to verify and vote to approve the recommended fees for the Board of Health as well, because they're an appointed board.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take agenda, we, we move Agenda Item 7B, Review of Licenses, to a future meeting after the fees have been identified and reviewed.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda is to appoint members to the Dayton-Rohoboth Advisory Finance Committee. The reason that I paused was simply because I did not know of anyone who hadn't expressed an interest in this, so I was...
Who did this? In June.
We did?
Okay, because we just got an email from Celeste Sullivan, who is the administrative assistant, who is asking us, per the regional agreement, we need to call for an advisory finance committee.
Yeah, the current members are me from this board, Robert Rendon, and Ed Schwartz.
So I think they need additional members, correct?
No, it's three members from each town. I know that Ed Schwartz still does want to...
The only thing, we should check with Mr. Rendon. I don't know if he's there as a member of the FinCom or the Capital Outlake Committee.
He is on that.
Mr. Schwartz is definitely FinCom.
Okay, so we don't actually...
It says at least two members from each town should be members of the Finance Committee. So it's because he's on the Finance Committee.
My question is, so we don't actually need to vote on anyone tonight?
No, because we did it in June.
Okay, I was just confused why this was even on the agenda then.
Well, we may not have notified DR.
Okay.
Yes, we probably need to notify them that these are the three members.
Gotcha. So it didn't need to be on the agenda for us to email them, though. That was my concern.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a motion that we notify the Superintendent's Office at DR that the town appointed Edward Schwartz, Robert Rendon, and Nancy Gulat to be the members to the Dayton-Rohoboth Advisory Finance Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it. That motion passes. I do want to tell my colleagues, I got a message that they didn't, people at home couldn't hear any sound. I'm hoping cable got that fixed. This was at 7:30, by the way.
Right now, they can't hear sound?
I don't know about right now, but I was getting text messages because I had to read that statement from my phone for the football team, and that's what I was being told.
But tonight, tonight...
Yes.
Yes, my wife also texts me at 7:30, and she hasn't texted me since, so...
So maybe it's working now. That might have been why Mr. Roberts...
Can somebody text us and tell if it's, if you're still watching?
You're still awake.
If it's, if it is.
While we're talking about appointments, I found out that I am representing the town in two areas that we didn't, we didn't appoint me to do. One of them is the MMA Policy Committee on Energy and the Environment, which I've done for many years.
Yeah, you've been doing that since I got here.
But I checked with Sue, and we didn't do that appointment this year.
I didn't even know that was like in a, I thought you were appointed by MMA.
I was, but in the past, yes, I was appointed by the MMA. It's one of these things you volunteer, and if they select you, they select you because, obviously, like a lot of communities represented, but it's also the area that they need to fill, you know, like a finance person, a personnel person, so it's what the vacancies are on the committee. But when I came back to the board in 2015, I began as a FinCom member, I served as a Selectman on the same committee. We just changed where I, what I, position I held. Went back to the Finance Committee. When I came back in 2015, I was told that I needed to be appointed by the board because I'm actually there as a representative of the town of Dayton. So anyhow, we need to put it on an agenda.
Yep, we can...
And the other one is...
The January, the first meeting in January.
And the other appointment that I have, the other job I'm doing that I didn't get appointed to do is to represent the town on the Egrada-Adalboro Town Housing Consortium. And I started doing that in 2015.
All right, we can get that on the agenda.
What was the first one? MMA Energy?
MMA Committee on Energy in the Environment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
And what made me think of it is they sent an email today and said, at the annual meeting, we will be looking at appointments. Are you interested in continuing to serve? Please advise. And I says, yeah, I'll keep doing it, all right? And then I thought, I don't know if I got appointed.
Okay. We're going to move on to vote to accept the IRS mileage rates effective January 2019. Can't really change these, so I am entertaining motions. I'm sorry, Madam Administrator.
I was just, it's interesting because they're going up three and a half cents.
And gas prices are going down.
Wait, does that mean I get three extra cents when I go to a conference?
For every mile.
Okay.
Three and a half.
Put me down for the Berkshire.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the IRS standard mileage rates for 2019, that being 58 cents per mile for business use, effective January 1st.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it. That motion passes. Madam Administrator, regarding the iPad rose gold, please. Thank you. I know you know what that means. Moving on to correspondence, I, so I thought we were not going to read these anymore. They are part of the packet. We did get a, so I'll just summarize. We got one from the Regional School District. We have been requested to attend a regional agreement task force meeting on January 29th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Dayton-Rohoboth Regional High School Community Conference Room. I do think we should discuss this quickly because five minutes is all it should take. We are, they are requesting two representatives from each town to attend the meeting. So what I think we need to vote on tonight is who, actually, let me back up. A, are we going to go to the meeting? That's one vote. B, who are going to be the two representatives if we vote that we are going to go to the meeting? So with that, who is volunteering?
Is this similar to the meeting that we went?
It's a smaller group, though.
This is, this is, this is, well, that's exactly what I want to address. It's a, it's a follow-up to when they were going to take the agreement and put it all together with all the thoughts.
With Rehoboth's suggestions.
And the discussion, all the, everything that happened, they were going to try to put it together. First of all, two representatives from the town of Dayton constitute a quorum. it together. First of all, two representatives from the town of Dayton constitute a quorum. Two from Rehoboth doesn't make a quorum. They're five. So, number one, that's a problem. That violates one man, one vote.
Is this saying it has to be selectmen? I didn't read it that way.
Yeah, no, I didn't read it that way.
Well-
Because I was thinking, who was ever on the RAC Committee?
I mean, they-
One person from that-
That committee got dissolved.
No, I know, but one person from that, I'm thinking of who would have intimate knowledge of the details, and that just came to mind. I didn't read it as two selectmen.
Well, it doesn't matter if it's two selectmen or two Finance Committee. The representation will not be equal. It's not one man, one vote, and this is not a subcommittee.
Or one woman.
Uh-huh, whatever, one person, one vote. The whole thing is, the meeting they had to discuss the agreement was an open public meeting. They wanted selectmen and FinCom people, so we went. There was discussion, a lot of notes taken, and they were gonna try to take everything in and come up with some kind of a new agreement that took into consideration, whatever.
Yep.
And now they're saying two people. No, no. Whether, if we're coming down to two, and I'm not one of them, I'm gonna be there, and I intend to speak, because this is not right for them to tell us. The member towns, they're limited to two people, whoever they are. That doesn't make sense.
I thought it would make sense to be one selectman and one Finance Committee. I mean, honestly, that's, when I read this, that's what I thought would be the best compromise.
And they're saying, they aren't saying a workshop. They're saying it's the final review. Just the final review. Now it's headed for town meeting, and what are we supposed to do? Sit there and say, "I didn't go to the meeting. I, I can't, whatever."
Well, but that's actually why, I agree with everything you've said, but that's actually why I think someone needs to go. We need to know what they're gonna try to do, because I feel like if we don't go, then we're not having that commu, I'm not saying, you're saying we shouldn't go. I get what you're saying.
No, 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 absolutely.
But we, someone needs to be there, because we said we were gonna have communication. The only way, and I'm not talking about this agreement, I have not seen the final agreement. I do not know what technically we're gonna be discussing at this meeting in terms of a document. However, in the spirit of communication, especially if something needs to come before the town, there does need to be some sort of representation there.
And-
Well, Mrs. School, that's concerned, though, is why is it only two?
Final review, and it's final-
I agree.
I intend to go on, Mrs. School, I tend to go on.
I was gonna go too.
And if you-
Of course.
If it says-
FinCom, do you wanna go?
Final review? If it's the final review, what's the next step? Town meeting?
Can I, I'm sorry, maybe I totally did not understand this letter, but I thought it was going to be about the regional agreement developed by the school committee.
No, we did that already.
No, no, I understand. Not the ones that came from the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, and that they were requesting two representatives. I didn't see that it would be one board. I thought it made sense to do one selectman and one Finance Committee member.
I think we're in agreement on that, though. Your interpretation's correct.
If it doesn't, if we have our delegation there, like, being one and one, saying, "Hey, hold up, I don't think this is a good thing for us," how can it be the final review?
Well, I think, I think what they're doing, yes, is exactly what you're saying. They're trying to limit the participation. What I'm saying to you, from a public standpoint, and elected officials, they can't do that. That would be like us telling them, "We're gonna have a meeting to discuss something school, related to schools, and we don't want anybody here from whatever." No, no, if we're gonna talk about schools, the entire school committee, including members from Rehoboth, are allowed to participate under the law.
So who's the school committee regional agreement task force? Who is that, and what is that, who makes that up?
It's members of the school committee.
They are the task-
It's like a subcommittee.
It's a subcommittee, but it's just school committee members that are the task force.
I believe so, correct. Yep. So here's what I think we should do.
But the night we met, the full school committee was there, and so were the full boards of selectmen, so.
And I think it actually went well.
There was a lot of, I thought there was a lot of good to say. What bothers me is a limit of two, and it's the final review. The final review before what?
Well, we would go and find out. Here's what I think we should do, because I actually agree a hundred percent. I think we should respond back to Celeste, I'm sorry, yes, to the Administrative Assistant to the Regional School District, and we should tell Ms. Sullivan that all three members of the board would like to be at the meeting, and so-
Actually, it's Ms., it's Mrs. Kuci you're gonna respond to. The chairman, she's the one who invited us.
No, 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 but it says-
She's saying submit the name to Celeste.
Yeah, to Celeste. So we would, we would speak to, you can, you know what? We can email them both at the same time. That's the great thing with email. We're gonna tell them, at the same time, that the Dayton Board of Selectmen is kindly requesting to allow, and I'm not, you don't have to be there, you don't want to.
Don't use allow. We don't need permission.
Okay.
I was just, I was just gonna say, you're all gonna go.
Correct. We all plan on attending. I'm sure all five members of the Rehoboth Board plan on attending.
The Finance Committee needs to know about this, and personally, the Finance Committee needs to be told, the Board of Selectmen plans to attend, and any and all Finance Committee members that wish to go should be there.
I almost think this is a moot point, though, for one simple reason. We're all residents of Dayton. The school district falls in the town of Dayton, so I can show up. What is this letter? Is someone stopping me from going into the meeting?
Well, so can all of the registered voters in Dayton show up. It's open public.
I think they're trying to organize it, because it is such an expansive list of people that they're trying to bring it down. But I'm not gonna try to speak for them. We will indicate your preference and let them know.
And let Mr. Swartz know, so he can get the word out to his committee.
Correct. Thank you on that. But I do agree that we should be there. Correspondence, continuing. A request to reduce the number of seats on the Open Space Committee. We previously had five. Is that correct, Madam Administrator?
Didn't we have seven, and we wanna go to five?
It's nine.
Because they can't get a quorum?
Yeah, there were a lot at one point. I think she's, I think Celeste Gulat's right. It was seven.
It's at least seven.
Yeah.
It's seven, there were vacancies, then you've just had another resignation, which means they're, they're basically done. They can't operate.
How many do they want?
And they're doing, you know, work.
Yeah. And when we discussed it, I remember you saying, "I like five as a committee."
I like five. Five, to me, it's easy to get a quorum. It's three people. All of the work is equally spread out, and it's not so big that you can't get anything done.
So, how many members do they have right now? I'm just trying to get to the blood and guts of it.
Seats. How many members do they have?
Members.
Four. How many seats they have is seven.
Well, members is more important to me. So if we choose five seats, then we have to find another member.
But they have a quorum. If you choose five, they have a quorum where they can operate. It's not debilitating, so.
What is their preference? I'm sorry.
I didn't ask. I also have questions.
Well, no, I know that.
She's just like, let's get everybody to show up and do-
Okay, so at least five.
But five works. It's an odd number, and they have four, you're not moving anybody else.
And three, we'd have to kick someone off, which we're not gonna do.
My question is, I thought this was a committee set up by the selectmen. She said the other night that it is a subcommittee of the planning board.
May I explain what had happened?
Yes, please.
It is not, it was never created. Correct me if I'm wrong, you were here.
Best practices.
It was correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It was never created as a subcommittee of the planning board. That is how it may be functioning, and I'm okay with that, because they are getting a certain amount of guidance from the planning board in terms of what they're doing and how to reach their goals. That was appointed, they were appointed by the Board of Selectmen. That committee, which may have existed before I got here, it was not functional when I got here, and so we established it again, and then we appointed the members.
And they did not go to town meeting, correct? It was a vote of the board?
No, no town meeting.
Perfect, so you can do whatever.
This Open Space was the third best practice under CCC, and it is an appointee, they are appointees of the Board of Selectmen, and they can work with any, work with, not under, work with any board that they need assistance from, okay? Planning board, whoever.
Correct.
So, um-
No, I, it's just when she called herself a subcommittee, or a subcommittee of the planning board, I was just like-
That's how they function, though. They're in the planning board office, they're talking to the planning board office.
I only asked because, I only asked because it matters with this request.
But I'm okay with them working closely with the planning board.
Absolutely.
But just like, in terms of who's going to appoint them, it's not the planning board.
That's why I asked. That's it. Because whoever's the appointer can decide who's going to be there.
I love how, like, you're, you're hitting your stride here.
And they may not-
Like, you know, you're like, wait, before we do anything here, who's appointing them?
And those, those, excuse me, those committee members probably aren't aware of that best practice and how that whole thing came about.
They're not.
They're after the fact.
Oh, they are. If you can hear us.
Well, now, yeah.
But that's just it. We, our chairman asked someone to text us if they can't hear us, but if they can't hear us, they don't know that he said, "Text us." Of all we know, they're not hearing us.
Well, we were like-
Circular logic. That's circular logic. Okay.
I'm making a motion that we, I'm making a motion that we reduce the Open Space Committee to five members.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And I will put the word out that there is one vacancy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Announcements. I don't see any written here, but-
That's totally my fault. This is what happens when I try to-
No, 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 no. It's, I wasn't even saying it like that. I was just gonna freelance and remind people that on Sunday, January 27th, 2018, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, we will have the grand opening.
2019.
2019. Oh, my God, I can't. We will have the Old Town Hall grand opening, thanks to our fantastic ribbon-cutting ceremony committee.
Uh, we have one more announcement.
Sure. Madam Administrator.
There are leftover toys from the toy drive at the school, if anyone knows of someone in need this holiday season. And thank you to our generous community for coming together and making those donations possible.
Madam Administrator, which school was that? Was that the elementary school?
That was the toy distribution at the Dayton Middle School.
Middle School.
Okay.
Um, and I would say, if you can hear me, a safe bet would be to call the town clerk, and we can direct from there.
Someone had actually asked me about that, so now I can get back to them, because they thought the pickup was at Town Hall, and I'm like, "I've never even seen toys there."
No, it's, it was Dayton Middle School.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Now I can get back to them.
One, one other announcement, um, and this is sort of a little progress announcement also. 2009 is when we expect the activity as far as groundbreaking and everything else to take place relative to the new addition, um, new construction and renovation at the Bristol County Aggie School. The Nat Crane House is still available if anybody wants to take it and move it. And if anyone knows of anyone, please have them get in touch with the Aggie School and let them know, because time is running out, and it's gonna come down if nobody takes it. And I mean demolished, as opposed to somebody buying it, renovating it, I mean, moving it, really. It would be a shame that, to lose it, but 2019 is the date. We've got a meeting at the end of January, the Finance Advisory Board, to hear the report relative to, um, the financial and in bonding.
Great.
Because they got approval and legislation, so now they're in the, into the bonding stage.
Okay.
The house is running out of time.
And I will file that under Selectmen's Reports. That was good. Good to know. I did not know they were doing the groundbreaking in January of 2019.
And I would just mention also, I, I told the, um, town administrator, prior to any groundbreaking, there will be a meeting with Gilbane Construction and architects, school officials, county officials, and all town officials related to the project. So that would be water, sewer, water select, whatever. And they will let us know when that meeting's coming up, so that any, any questions can be answered before equipment starts rolling over there.
Perfect. All right. I am happy to allot five minutes for Selectmen's Reports. Selectmen Pacheco?
Sure, mine won't take five minutes. The, uh, I'll yield my time to other members. But the 40B Committee's been meeting. We met again tonight. We're almost completed the housing production plan for the town. It expires this February. We hope to approve the plan in January, and then we'll present it to the board, so that the Board of Selectmen can look at it and vote on it. So.
Selectmen Pacheco, I have one question about that, and if you can't answer it, just tell me now. Will we have, will we be provided the, the, um, sort of outdated housing product, the previous housing production plan that we can sort of compare it to?
Well, it's on the website, but if, if you want.
Okay.
Maybe we'll send it to your iPad.
Yeah, we'll use it on my iPad, exactly.
Send it to your iPad, and you'll have it.
I do, you guys are doing great.
There are two prior ones, and this is the third one.
Oh, I didn't even know there was two. I know of the, the one that's, the one that was created several years ago.
The one that's expiring, yes, yes. The first one was done by the zoning board of appeals. The second one's the planning board, with Serpents' help, and the third one's also, it's the 40B Committee with Serpents' help. And I think it's pretty good, and we're gonna be meeting on a regular basis, and the 40B Committee, talking about housing for the elderly as we had a meeting the other night.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
It's interesting. That may not be our plan, but we're looking into it and see what's available. We're gonna be contacting, uh, the committee with the Land, Land Use Committee to see what's available in the town, so it's, it's a pretty, it's a good active-
Do you have an update on this, Madam Administrator?
Uh, thank you to Lisa Tetro in the Assessor's Office. I have a color-coded map of the town-owned-
I could not see it on my phone, by the way.
I know, I'm just, it was, um, town-owned land with the designated, which pieces were conservation. And so she did an overview of the town, and then, um, separate map, like, close-up maps of it, so. I'm not gonna give it to you, no offense, but I'd be happy to give you copies and stuff.
I'm glad you have it, and if, if a committee is, like, requesting that information for the purpose of a discussion, now they can have it. That's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm sure the 40B Committee would appreciate that. Thank you.
Has there been much updating of the 40B plan since the last time it was done?
There has been updating.
Rules, regs, or whatever?
Not rules and regs, but there's been updating in the plan itself, and we're looking, we didn't have the correct numbers. You know, it was brought up the other night at that meeting that we attended. We have maybe fifteen more houses that we can add to it, but we're still below the ten percent for the town. We're 5.6 plus, we're gonna add these houses. But don't forget, in 2020, with the census, the houses that we have in, in town are gonna be way different. Right now, we're, they say it's twenty, yeah, right, it's 2,500. This goes back to 2010, so we know we've had more houses since then in town. So, it's a-
It's probably gonna be less than five percent, is what we would think.
It's always definitely gonna be less than five percent, but if we're able to get senior housing, perhaps apartments, which would be great, and I think it's a need in town, they all count, to us, the affordable housing, if there's a twenty, at least 25% affordable units, so.
Doesn't an assisted living facility count as well?
Do we have, we don't have one, but I-
No, no, I'm sorry.
Yes.
One came in, assisted living.
I believe it.
I believe it.
Somebody had a plan like that for Hunter's Hill.
Yes, I remember. It fell apart, but, uh-
Yeah, but not the best plan, in my opinion, but, yeah, you know. All right, Selectmen Gulat, thank you very much, Selectmen Pacheco. I do want to thank the 40B Committee. You have been rocking and rolling as a committee, and we thank you for all your work. It is not easy work, that I can tell you. I have read that old housing production plan. Not easy, but necessary, and we appreciate all that you're doing.
I remember when they did it. That's why I was wondering what the changes, you know, there was much. Because Tom Pius led that charge way back when.
He's still, he's still right there on the front lines.
He's the chairperson.
Oh, he still is?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Selectmen Gulat, did you have any selected to report?
The only thing I want to say is that the, uh, Selectmen and Town Administrators sponsored a Christmas breakfast for town employees at the Old Town Hall. It was very well-attended. It was a very enjoyable time. It was, it was, I'll call it a unique experience, because before, we really opened it up, and, um, employees that had to cover places where there were, you know, clients and whatever, they shared, so that people, everyone could come that was, that wanted to come. But it was, it was very enjoyable. It was a lot of fun. And it was really nice. I think, I think employees appreciated it.
And our venue was gorgeous, yes.
That's the important thing.
Our venue was gorgeous.
Was the breakfast good?
Yes, in fact, I know that you weren't able to attend, but I did eat your share of the breakfast.
Oh, that is. I'm happy someone did.
I did not get a Melasada. I waited too long.
There was not left.
No one saved me one.
Karen smuggled one out. She was wise.
She had two?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm like, that second one was mine, Karen.
She had foresight.
I went to the bakery on Saturday, just to pick something up, and I says, "I just want you to know, the Melasada was such a hit. And next year, if we're gonna do this, I'm gonna have to get at least twenty-four." She says, "Next year, I'll cut them into fours." I says, "No, they'll take four there."
So I will say, I could not be there. I have no more PTO time at work, so I could not take that morning to be there. Believe me, I wanted that breakfast, and I wanted to be in the new Old Town Hall, okay? I did see the pictures. I was forwarded the pictures. Everyone looked so happy, beautiful space, just, it, it really made me happy, and everyone looked genuinely happy in the pictures. Everyone looked like they were having a nice time. So I just really thank everyone for coming together on that in such quick, you know, short notice.
And we introduced Mike, who was the, you know, the highway department guys that actually worked there, and I think at one time, they all, they all at one time did something there, but we introduced Mike and, and pointed out some of the, um, artistry, I'll call it, that, that he created from the, the leftover beadboard that was on the stage. So, really, really crea, very creative person.
Very happy.
He didn't sing, but-
So it sounds like the space is getting used as it was intended, which is to bring people together, especially that top floor meeting space?
I think, I think people that hadn't been in there for months were in awe when they walked in and saw that floor looks like glass and everything.
I got there a little early, and the highway had brought over the Christmas tree, which was really nice, and Mike happened to open the door for me as I came in, and it was just such a picturesque view, because the tree was right in front of me. I saw the door and the entryway, and then the stage with the town's seal or picture behind there. It was just, it was just a really nice visual, so I'm happy. I'm happy it's part of our inventory.
That was a very long five minutes.
I would, I would hope that in the future, we can have a Selectmen's meeting in that building.
Oh, I totally agree. My only concern-
The live council is going up.
Okay, that was my concern, was that we couldn't have it be live. So once that's resolved, I have no problem. I'm thinking a meeting in January, maybe the first or the second one, whichever one.
I'll have to double-check on the live council, but that's the only-
Okay, no problem. All right, we're moving on to acknowledgements. An anonymous donation in the amount of $30 to Primetime. Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the anonymous donation of $30 to Primetime.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular Selectmen's meeting of November 14, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I'll make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the Selectmen's regular meeting of November 28th and December 12th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 25A-19 in the amount of $94,583, 94 cents payroll. 25B-19 in the amount of $5,943.08 and 25C-19 in the amount of $411.37, the last two being accounts payable, be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We have no further public input, so before we adjourn, I did just want to tell everyone and my lovely colleagues here in this room to have a fantastic and fabulous and Merry Christmas, hopefully surrounded by your beautiful friends and family, um, and I can't wait for a couple days off from work.